At 5:30 PM on Tuesday, March 19, 2019, in the council chambers at Edel Creek West Holland in the city of Alpine, Texas, for the purpose of considering the attached agenda. The notice is posted pursuant to Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 551.043, Texas Department Code. Public Notice: The use of cellular phones are prohibited in the city council chambers during meetings of the city council. Members of ours will provide an opportunity to address the council during public hearings and during action items. Please speak into the microphone located at the podium and state your name and address. If you have a petition or other information pertaining to your subject, please present it to the city secretary. State law prohibits the council from discussing or taking any action on any issue not included on the agenda. But if appropriate, the council may schedule a topic for future discussion or refer the matter to staff. No personal attacks on council members or city staff will be allowed. The mayor may call a point of order to stop the personal attacks if an individual continues to personally attack an elected official or staff members in a meeting. They may be barred. Call this meeting to order will have the invocation by Virginia Ann.
Dear Lord, our Father and Creator of the universe, we come to you tonight and we ask for your gifts, your grace, your wisdom, and your strength so that all decisions made here may reflect your will and the common good. We thank you, Lord, for the beauty of this spring that is almost upon us, for the return of our turkey vultures, for the blooming trees, for the blue bonnets. We thank you, Lord. Lead us to take time to go out into nature and to relax and be refreshed. You granted your Holy Spirit to give us your love poured into our hearts. May we, in turn, share it with our neighbors, make our hearts tender to the most vulnerable, the fragile elderly, the addicted, those with disabilities, and all others who are in need of your help. We pray especially for Jim Fitzgerald, who is in the hospital. We ask your healing grace surround him. Be with this body of people. May we be a glory to you with thanksgiving. In Jesus' name, amen.
Blessed are the nations.
Blessed are the nations. To the back of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag.
Our Texas flag. Our blessed are the citizens of Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. City Secretary, do we have a quorum?
Mayor, we do have a quorum. An excuse actually from Council Fitzgerald. And the agenda was posted on January 11th. There's a tag on page 11 on March 15th.
Okay, thank you very much. I have a presentation of thanks to Kip Angel for 10-year-plus service as a member of the chair of the Alpine Advisory Board. Kip?
I don't see Kip here today. I'll see him from there. Let's say as well.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and read. And I guess you can give it to him. Okay, this certificate is a presentation to Kip Angel Airport Advisory Board. In grateful appreciation to Kip Angel for his service as a member of the Airport Advisory Board, City of Alpine, Texas, from 2008 to 2019. Signed on this 19th day of March, 2019, by best friend, Mayor of City of Alpine, Texas. So you ordered that too. Thank you. Okay. Reports, I don't have a report, city manager?
I don't have a report, Mayor.
Okay, city staff updates?
We have missed report, report by Judge Stanislaw.
Good evening. How are you all?
Judge.
As you can see on our report, this is kind of how Hill Country assaulted that we have spit it out. And so not all our active cases are only collections. And so what I'll try to do next time, cut off a little guard a little bit. Kelly was not aware of, she did any reports for Judge Standifer, so anyway, after we go through this and we answer questions of Kelly's here, then we can get exactly what you want to report and have that for you easier to read. This is not easy for me to read either. But that's, like I said, that's the way Hill Country spit it out for Kelly to put. So the active cases, and we can start in matter, let's just start with January. Well, let's just start with February. So the, the active cases are all actually in collections. And so that's, and I don't know, Kelly, how far back is that? If you know?
I don't.
Okay, so that's just been going on and on, whatever's gone to collections over the years. So I'll make a note to just see if we have a start date. And of course, it's up to the present. All right, so we've got four, four of the month of February, 467 cases in collections. And I did ask Kelly, because I did not know this, our law firm that handles the collections will tell us if that person has paid through the collection agency. They will come back and report that to us. Kelly said that most of the time, if they get a collection letter, a person does, they'll just go to the window and try to pay whatever they owe. So I think that's probably another number that we should report on for you. Okay, so I'll sort of write that down. The number of collections paid just comes so we know. I don't know if they do that monthly or quarterly, but I'll, I'll fly it out. Okay, so our inactive cases are actually our active cases. So for the month of February, we had 57. New cases filed are 19. And of course, total cases on the docket is not right. So that's, we're not counting. In my mind, we're not counting. Once, once a file goes to collections, it's kind of like once you bring the check, it is out of your bank, you know, you just don't, you don't look at it. So that's the way I kind of view it. Okay, now dispositions prior to court appearance, that is persons who have been issued citations coming to the office and working that out or paying whatever they owe, whether it's a plea, nolo, or guilty, or however we work that out. So that's, that's good. Okay, now dismissed by prosecution. That number, I won't be able to tell you exactly what that is because if you'll see two down from that, compliance dismissals. Compliance dismissals are, okay, we put you on six months deferred, whatever amount of time that you're deferred, you have completed that. You've proven to us that you've maybe gotten your insurance back or you've done that. So the compliance dismissals, one, one person came in in February and proved to us, and that probably was back in, maybe in the summer, that kind of thing. Because we usually don't give short deferred periods. It usually is about six months. So my guess, and I can look at that, if y'all want to know, that's probably from several months back. So total cases disposed in February is 14. Again, we go back to the dismissal by prosecution. There's several reasons that the prosecutor might want to dismiss that we may have, we may not have, just like our code enforcement. We have many citations with probably folks named Patsy. Okay, or as the witness. She's no longer with us, if so, in that respect, we don't have a witness available for trial or for anything. And as you can see, going over to the, let's see, what is it?
Ordinance.
City ordinance. We don't have any of those. So anyway, that's one reason for the dismissal by prosecution. It may be that the prosecutor decided we didn't have the evidence that we thought we had. So, you know, that's, that's something you want to look into more as far as details. We can get that as well for you. Okay, total cases ending at the end of the month, that inactive cases, that's not relevant. Our inactive cases, which are our active cases, is 57. We had 10, in February, 10 show calls hearings. And since I've been in, we've probably had about that many show calls hearings. That means the person has been issued a citation. We have given them notice probably in January. They did not show up in January. So we put them on a show calls docket to come and tell us why they didn't show up. And they may not have shown up then, but that, that's what that is. So you have, you have some repeat show calls hearings, violated files to appear. Okay. Now, the money, I don't have the money, so that will just show you kind of where we are. And this, this goes back, we've done our January and our October, and I believe October was our first month in. Now, one number that I want Kelly to get for us, and between her schedule and my schedule, we didn't get this number, is how many cases did I come in to court already having on the docket as far as not being taken care of by the previous judge? And of course, we know, I think there was not a docket, probably July was the last docket, Kelly?
About three months.
Okay, so we've got August, October, really just two months. I thought it was about four or five. But I can get that number as to when I came on, how many cases were just sitting there? And that'll, that'll kind of give us an idea of what's going on. Now, let me report something that's not on here. Well, let me ask my questions. Do you have any questions about those numbers or, you know, parking citations, penal code citations? Those are DWIs or some criminal as opposed to a city ordinance or non-moving violation? Non-parking, parking, those are non-moving violations?
So Judge, I do have some questions. I'm still trying to sort out the numbers. I'm looking at the, I'm just going to go back to the March auditions. That's the most important. Total cases, what's the definition of that?
Total cases on the docket is going to be that, including the cases that have gone to collections plus what you're calling inactive cases, which are our active cases. So collection, things that have gone to collections, which are in the hundreds, several hundreds. Our active cases that we have gotten, let's say haven't been taken care of since July, August, and then the new cases filed in March. That's what that number represents. And so next time, like I said, well, this will, this will be better. Well, we'll get the numbers for Hill Country, but put them in a, what I, like I said, what I think is easier to read. If it's an active case, then it's not collections. Collections means we don't have anything to do with cases.
So what I'm just trying to understand is what's your backlog of cases that have yet to be worked by you from a court standpoint, or people still have outstanding tickets or citations just to be worked?
What would you guess, Kelly? I would, I would say 467.
And the reason I ask that, when I came on council four and a half years ago, there was a huge backlog measured in the thousands. And there was four years, it didn't matter what happened, you know, the court was not taking any actions. So you could have gotten a citation and sat on it and nothing. So that's what I'm trying to understand. Where are we shooting our backlog?
Well, the 467 is probably where we're at, the backlog. Those cases, some of them are in collections, and because they haven't been paid, they still show as open. So that's why that number is what it is. But it's not in the thousands.
Yeah, no, I understand that you all, you can't down.
Yeah, we've seen some of that stuff.
Right. And the next question I have is relative to the amount of money kept by the city, permitted to state in total. Is that cumulative or is that by month?
That's by the month.
So you collected basically $3,000 in the month of February, which, you know, the city kept 2,000 of that and the rest went to the state?
Correct.
Okay, well, that's good. That's actually very good.
A question along those same lines regarding funding for the amounts collected. The amounts that are collected by the city, I'm assuming that goes into the good state and the court funds, or does that go into the general fund and then reverted back to you guys somehow, or?
Josh, I would.
Yes.
Yes. Because I don't, yeah.
They go, yeah, they go, the expenses for the municipal court come out of the general fund, so the money goes into the general fund. There are two fees that are paid, the technology fund and the building security fund, that go into separate funds.
Okay, so when we do the budget, we basically are organizing how those fundings will be used.
Right, this number kept by city is what we look at.
And the amounts collected, is it going to go to the state? That's what.
That is set by state law. The state determines how much money we need to collect on each type of citation to send to them. And then we keep 10% administrative fee for collecting that money. Judge, I have a question. Do you, do you and Kelly want to talk about the warrant roundup a little bit?
Sure. Do you, if you want to keep it. Because if it's me and I raise my hand, then you can bathe me and I won't know what I was going to say. Because when we have these dockets, hardly anyone comes to our party meeting. We don't get people coming on. How are we going to do this? Ronnie Dotson, the sheriff, of course, he doesn't have enough, he doesn't have enough room at the jail to, to let our Class C stay for a period of time, even overnight. And I understand that. But what, what we decided that we would like to do and like to try, we talked to the city manager about that, and our prosecutor and Kelly and I is doing what we call warrant roundup. Now, normally you think it's warrant roundup, we're going to arrest everybody that has not shown up and should have shown up. And if we've got 30, 50 people, then what are we going to do with them? To, to allay some of that, that problem, we've talked about putting out maybe on a public service announcement, and the PD can put this on their Facebook. We're going to get our, our number of warrants, and I'm not sure how, what we are up to, maybe 30, something about 30. And their, PD is going to put on their Facebook, you have a warrant for your arrest. If this is not taken care of in the next two weeks, and I'm throwing that out there because we haven't decided, then you will be arrested at whatever point, you know, I'm not going to tell them a certain day, you will be arrested. And so I think that once we start that in motion and get some people being arrested at their work and embarrassed and that kind of thing, that I'll probably get more, more people wanting to come to the party and getting things taken care of. Or maybe just going to Kelly and getting things taken care of prior to that. So that goes a little bit, when I first came on by, I don't know what enforcement we have, how are we going to get these people to kind of pay what they owe? And if someone comes to us and can't pay, we've worked that out. That's not a problem. But most of these people, probably all of them, can, can pay or show up to court and tell us what's going on. Don't just ignore us. So in that respect, we're going to give them a chance and.
An amnesty period.
An amnesty period. And then after that, we're going to arrest them. I don't think you're going to believe that we're going to do that because I don't think it's going on. Was it Judge Standifer? Did you ever?
I never was involved in that.
Okay, so.
And I've been here two years.
That was the issue we were having with this court. As long as I can remember, there was no consequences. I didn't show up, what the heck?
Exactly.
And so now there are going to be consequences. So people need to pay the pipe now, you know, you want to say that.
Exactly.
And we can move forward because that has always been an issue with a municipal court, you know, just, but, you know, about 13, maybe one.
Exactly. And that gets around and I know that. So, well, we'll, we'll organize or get with PD and, of course, they are looted on their people and shifts and that kind of thing. But how it's easiest for them to start, you know, going and collecting people, we'll be, we'll maybe be there for not a specific docket date, but Kelly and I will be there and maybe Lauren to take money. And when these people are arrested, Kelly will say, I want to pay now, then we'll, if they want to get that done and get those cases off the docket.
So you, well, I think I heard you say is Facebook, why Facebook, not the newspaper? Is not everyone on Facebook, not everyone's on the newspaper?
True, and I think we're going to do something.
We have to publish.
We have to publish it. I was just talking about the PD, you know, whoever looks, I don't look at Facebook really at all, so that doesn't, but, and maybe the PD doesn't have, I think they have a Facebook, don't they?
They have a Facebook, but in order to do their warrant roundup, the city has to actually publish it for two weeks.
Yeah, we would also publish, I'm sorry, thank you for that. We talked about that. And a lot of people do look on the PD just to see, you know, see who's going to be arrested. So, you know, that, that's one aspect I like. You know, my husband will totally put on Facebook, I definitely.
Thank you. So the question I was going to ask is, we asked Chief Scous to give us, next time he comes in, a little bit more insight about what's going on on the animal side. Where citations have been issued, one of the challenges is the follow-up occurs when people show up and forth. Could it be helpful for us to understand, we're not interested in names, just some sense about how we came in and what the outcome was, given all the interest on what goes on in animal violations?
I, from the dockets I've had, we have had several people show up, probably more than not, with the animals at large and the, and the chip, those kind of violations. And they all paid. Now, we've given, some of them might say, I can't pay everything today, but can I pay this? But they, they have been very compliant. Now, we've got some on the, on the show calls that have not, have not come in. And so they'll, you know, be worried for cussing the invitation. But we've really had, as far as I'm concerned, we've had, everybody that's come in on that kind of citation has been very compliant and paid. We've had a couple of people, it's happened to a couple of times in a row because they haven't gotten their defense done, and they have paid. We have never, as far as my dockets, have had any anger issues toward people saying, why are you doing this and blah, blah, blah? We have not. They have come in and wanted to pay or made arrangements to pay. So that's, I think that's worked very well. Yeah.
I think one of the things that's helped a lot is the prosecutor, Barbara. She's not treating it as just a whatever case. She's saying, you're not going to get this dismissed. I'll give you, you know, $20 off of it, but that's as far as it's going to go. So she's been a lot tougher on them. So I think that that's been a big difference as well.
That's one of the areas that has really worked well and, like I said, not any anger issues. So, yeah. And I, you know, if, like I said, the next report, this one's kind of sloppy, very sloppy for several reasons. I've kind of got what I think we should present to you. Do you, do you have questions about the collections? I, I kind of do. You know, how often they report back to us as far as who's paid and who hasn't, how long do they keep it before, do they just keep it indefinitely? Because I think there's going to be some numbers and some amount of money in collections that we're not going to get, and I don't, you know, I'm not sure. I don't feel about that.
I can get with you on that later and then maybe have them come down to meet with you just to kind of tell you how that works. But no, as soon as they collect it, they do. It's not like, it's not like, they hold it till like the 100th of March.
I'm just thinking about not the ones that pay, but the ones that don't pay, that's up here, months and months and months of collection letters coming to your house and just getting more.
Yeah, because we have a number of collection process, I presume, it was using you on as you came on board using SCOP law and the other elements, a couple of those sort of processes.
No, we're not using SCOP law.
So what are we, so it'd be helpful then to understand what we are going to give in.
We're using a third-party collection agency, Purdue Brandon Collier or something. So once we've gone through the warrant process, they go to a list, and that list is what Kelly consented them to start collecting. They, they've had some issues with it because either what was in the system wasn't complete. And then as the court, there's a process we have to go through to ensure the defendant has had all of the elements for due process before we send them to collections. And, and there's just, I guess, just been a question as to, you know, was, was a warrant issued for this? Is this coming in as a warrant collection? Is this just a citation? And then trying to match up all that paperwork. So coming back, looking at, you know, the 467 that are in collections, it has, it wasn't, we, we didn't give them a clean list of collections. In fact, I know the first month, we had like maybe eight or 10 people that came in that said they had already paid, but they were still showing open. And so those kind of issues, they kind of lay down and they kind of said, well, let's not send this out en masse, it's work a few at a time and make sure we've got all of the elements in place to collect.
Because it used to be you couldn't get your driver's license for you if you had a outstanding ticket, so is that just?
So we are still sending them to OmniBase, right? So we are using OmniBase. I couldn't tell you, I don't, do you know how many are paid through OmniBase?
Well, I don't have a number. I have to look it up, but usually they're a few years older because, of course, they don't have to review their driver's license until, I don't know how many years it is. I think three or something like that, or four. So we're cases from like 14, 15, they finally can pay it, and then I take it off of OmniBase. So that's kind of, that was a longer process because if they don't have to review their driver's license, then they're not going to, it's not going to hold them back any. Yeah.
And normally those people who don't have a valid driver's license, normally it's a DWI or something to that effect, they are going to draw and they are going to get a CDU prosecutions, DPS, yes, over and over and over. And the charges that go to DPS to clear that up, just, just stack up to where they don't care anymore. So that's, the people that really care about the driver's license, that, that's going to do a lot of good. The people that don't, they're going to draw without insurance and without the license. But we'll, we'll try to have you up though, more clear, as far as active and non-active than, you know, how many cases did I inherit? I can get that for you, and this will be, it'll be more clear. Like I said, you know, with Hill County, that, that, Kelly, you know, it's not active tonight, it's going to collections. So I thought that we still don't worry about what's in collections. We might get some money from that, but maybe, you know, out of sight, out of mind as far as just trying to get our, we're still good.
Any more questions?
Thank you, Judge. Kelly, thank you.
And we're going to go ahead and move to public hearings. Public hearings to obtain citizen's views and comments concerning a zoning change application from R1 to C2 intended plan to expand a nonprofit 70 qualified housing. Link description being on Block 10 North Heights as issued to the city of Alpine, Brewster County, Texas. As the same appears in Platte envelope number 63 on file in the office of the county clerk of Brewster County, save and accept the filing portion of lots 1 and 2 and 3 conveyed to the state of Texas for highway purposes and the west 95.32 feet of block 10 being 0.61 acres more or less conveyed by Charles C. Lightsey ET UX and Wanda P. Lightsey to tie at development partnership by D. Record of Brewster County, Texas. Do you have any public comment? Yes, sir.
Richard Zimmer from Ward 5, and I'm head of Alpine and zoning. And in February, we denied the request to leave us based upon our confusion with the language of it. Although all the members that were there said it was a great idea if we could just clear up the language. And so we just wanted to let you know that we support the idea that they would like to expand and have the foresight and vision to see that as Alpine grows, where we need good healthcare services.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, sir. Anybody else?
Hi, I know I was here last month, so I told you everything about the healthcare, but I just wanted to thank you one more time.
Okay, please introduce yourself.
Oh, my name is Linda Moninat, and I'm Ward 3. Although the clinic isn't Ward 1.
Right, that's good.
So I just wanted to thank you one more time for giving us the opportunity to be here. You know, there's medical necessities in this area, and for us to be able to grow into that building would be great. It's in a great location, it's next to our clinic, so it, it makes sense. You know, there's not a lot of businesses coming into town trying to move into that building. And so for us, it's a perfect building, it's just next door, and it's close to the hospital. So we appreciate everything you can do to get this reset. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else? Seeing N01, we'll move to B. Public hearing to obtain citizen's view and comments concerning ordinance 2019.03-02, amended ordinance number 2016-11-01, rules and regulations for Alpine, cash, parents being. Cash Fairness Municipal Airport, Section 1, use of airport restricted tools, add certain reporting requirements for any person using the airport for business or commercial purposes, provided that this ordinance shall be cumulative, provide a severability clause, provide for a savings clause, provide a penalty clause, provide for a publication in the official newspaper, and provide an effective date. Any comments? Counselor?
I'll share, I can speak.
Okay. Okay, anybody? Okay, let's move on then, to C, public hearing to obtain citizen's views and comments concerning ordinance 2019-02-02, amended Article 6, public information request of Chapter 2, administration of the Code of Ordinances, to provide that a public information officer for the city is the city secretary, provided that this ordinance shall be cumulative, provide a severable severability clause, provide for savings clause, provide for publication in the official newspaper, provide an effective date. Any comments? Seeing none? Okay, let's move on to the consent agenda then, and minutes, financial reports, department written reports, board appointments. And notice to the public, the following items are of routine and administrative nature to the council and the furnished background and supportive material item, and order has been discussed at a previous meeting. All items will be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by city, by council member, and with the event, in which event, the item or items will immediately be withdrawn for individual consideration in its normal sequence after the items stop requiring separate discussions have been acted upon. The remaining items will be adopted by one vote. City manager.
Mr. Mayor, I will definitely approve the consent agenda as written.
Okay.
Um, Mayor, I'm sorry, I apologize, for the, I was just verifying this with Cynthia on the Tuesday, March 5th, minutes.
Mm-hmm.
Item number four, just want to confirm the amount, the contract value not be greater than $210?
About.
Should be $210,000.
Okay.
So I move that we approve the consent agenda as written, with one exception, under action number four of the minutes, that should reflect $210,000, which is what the council wants.
All righty. And let's also take care of B and C over at it. That's one Stevens.
They're all part of that.
They're all part of it. It's all tied in together, okay. All right. Post-bid night and second it. Any discussion? Seeing none? Those in favor, raise your right hand. Propose like, like sign. What you cares? Okay, let's move to information or discussion items, and the formal report by Megan and Tru.
Um, usually Kip would be here, but as you know, he resigned, and we just appointed a new chair, which is not available. So I wanted to give you guys a rundown of what all the airport's been up to. I first want to congratulate the advisory board. I've been working on and off with the advisory board for the airport for the past two and a half years. Council changes, airport advisory member changes, changes just in general, communication, there's always been a little bit of a lack of cohesiveness, and the past probably eight, nine months, there has been such a huge change in the advisory board. They are moving forward, they are questioning, they are concerned, they're providing information, they're doing their own research, they're working together as a group, and I'm really excited for them. I'm excited that they've got some new members as well, so I'm hoping that that cohesiveness moves forward, that they're just as open as they are with me and staff and council currently, moving forward. So some of the things that have been brought up lately that I wanted to touch base on is in June, July, we sent out a letter of interest on behalf of the airport advisory board to Tex-That Aviation. This is the "Please Help Us" letter. The three things that we addressed in the letter was our lighting system, the moving of the AWAS, which is the Automated Weather System. This is basically where pilots call in what's the condition, can I land, can I not land? And then our master plan. Master plan seems to be a big word across all of the departments with the city, it includes the airport as well. So the lighting system was our biggest concern first. So Tex-That Aviation does have it on their proposed 19, 2019, 2020 list of projects. The design phase would cost $70,000, with the city's portion being $7,000. So yes, the financial side of it is always gonna be concerned as the airport struggles to try to bring in the additional funding to meet these projects. The construction phase would be next. It would be $90,000 for the city portion, for a total of $900,000. Our lighting system is from the 70s. We are the last airport who actually uses VASI bulbs. We are now hunting them down from every airport who has switched over to the newer, which isn't the newest, but the one step up, to get backup supplies. When these bulbs go out, it makes it really hard, basically pilots can't come in, there's not the lighting from the runways. So we're trying really hard to reach out to anyone and everyone. There are very limited sources. Tex-That Aviation has been wonderful with us, and actually provided us a list of all the airports, they just redid their lighting systems, to see if we could beg, plead, barter, sell organs to get some of these light bulbs. We have found a couple places that are willing to depart with them, and actually at reasonable cost. One company was saying a hundred dollars a bulb, we found one for $37.50 a bulb, so of course financed me $37.50. So we're really, really, really trying to kind of build up a little bit of a inventory for them, for fear that if, you know, the summer, the weather, electrical issues come up, that, you know, we're not down at any point.
And just explain what VASI is. If you're a pilot coming at night, it gives you different, a red and a white ball to tell you if you're at the right angle coming in for the landing, typically 3 degrees. If you're, normally the saying is, "Two reds are dead, means you're too low, a little too high, or two whites means you're too high", so you want a red one or a white one. Those balls are really important coming in at night.
And the transducers that go with them are now only being produced by one company, they're special ordered, they don't go out typically as often, unless we get hit with a major electrical storm, then we could lose them. So we do have a few backups of those. But we're kind of praying that as we move into this new phase, that the city, of course, we financially have the money, we can get the design and the construction in place to update it. The second part of that letter was the AWAS. So Tex-That, of course, asks us, "Well, how important is it for you?" The first concern they have is our lighting system, with it being as old as it is, and the only airport left. They have it kind of on a hold to initiate the lighting system project, and then to go into the AWAS project. This will also allow our NPE funds to catch up. So we do get money set aside by Tex-That Aviation, the federal government, additional funding. So this is kind of where this is coming from, this big project that we're currently underused a lot of it, so it's just kind of a catch-up. The master plan was not addressed when I spoke with our planner. It was kind of, "Let's get your lighting system started, let's see where you're at with your AWAS, and then we'll get the master plan." The master plan, like every department, is important. If you don't have it, and you go out for letters of interest, they want to know, "Where is it in the plan?" We're slightly fortunate that our current master plan, even though it is outdated, addresses these issues to begin with. So it kind of is covering our bases right now, but the airport advisory board is trying to push really hard. I've gone to get to know several Tex-That Aviation members that I never thought I would get to know, Bill Miller, engineers, our planners, multiple planners, kind of, you know, "Please, please, please move it forward faster." So we're just basically on their, their plan. The master plan estimated cost is about $150,000, and the AWAS, that's to move the AWAS, is to completely relocate it, is around $250,000. The AWAS would be about a 75-25 split, with the city having to come up with 25. The reason for the move is the location kind of doesn't allow the city airport to grow because of where it's located, it doesn't allow the additional construction to move out. In the past three months, I've had five people inquire on building new hangars. Last council meeting, you guys approved the building of new T-hangers, so we want to encourage the building of hangars, but we don't want to have to have them build around a 500-foot circle to be within the FAA requirements. The other big thing, of course, is the construction. If you haven't been out to the airport, I encourage you to go out to the airport. We do have a complete rebuild of our taxiway and our ramp. They are now currently working on the east side of the ramp. Some of the concerns that have been addressed throughout this whole process was the opening and closing of the runway to ensure that we weren't gonna lose fuel sales, so that the airport could still operate and manage on its own. The tie-down layout, which was a fun one, you never know how close airplanes can actually fit close together and how the puzzle pieces work. So Lochner Engineers was great about working with us and Tex-That Aviation to get the tie-down layout more presentable, easier to understand, not so much of a puzzle. The unresolved actually helped us. The portion of the ramp that's not paved under the contract, council last meeting, of course, approved the additional, up to $20,000 to have that portioned. It was gonna leave a section right by the fence line unpaved. We fought with Tex-That probably for about a month, trying to argue with them that it didn't make sense to take away what we already had, when that's not the purpose of how this project works. Unfortunately, we lost, they are providing the 2.9 million, so kind of have to wait out, so that's starting underway as well. We're looking at a completion date for the project in late April, early May, pending, of course, any weather, any setbacks. I know they've had a couple issues with their equipment, but they've stayed late to fix it to move forward. They want to finish the project as much as we want our airport completely open and ready for the public. They've addressed the rules and regulations, which is of course currently on the agenda, so that's been a work in progress. They finally all got together, got the verbiage, and moved forward. Council just recently approved the new construction and event packets. We're gonna get those put together, so that anyone who wants to hold an event in a hangar out at the airport, as long as it meets the FAA guidelines, our rules and regulations, city ordinances, they would have this packet that they could fill out. It's the notification to the city that, "Hey, we're having a dance, hey, we're having a balloon festival, no, you cannot have a car show at the airport, just so you know, it is shunned upon." And then, of course, the new construction, instead of it kind of being hard for people to like, "Who do I contact?", it's just, "Here's a packet, here are the rules, the guidelines, just let us know if you're interested." The advisory board brought up to city council about the joint airport zoning vote, zoning, or I'm tongue-capped, like you, Mayor.
We drink the same water.
Hi. This was a concern, of course, with, as Rick pointed out, the last meeting with the building around the airport. You want to make sure that because part of it's county-city, that those who build outside the area, that it is in compliance, there are air study requirements, so these kind of things need to be taken into consideration. Utility poles, I think if you've seen the utility poles, they are required to be of a certain height. AT&amp;T and Big Ben Telephone have both had to come in and kind of shorten them in order to be in compliance with FAA rules and regulations. Big-ticket workshop, so they've had several conversations on what are the needs of the airport. They've ranked them, they've talked about them, what comes first, what comes second. Letters of interest, they use the term "big iron". There's a concrete section in the middle of the ramp where big iron sits, this is for your heavier planes, so it doesn't ruin the ramp. Ramp is asphalt, heavier planes tend to dent it, you don't really want that to happen, especially when you just got a nice new ramp. So that's one of the things that they've brought up. Parking, terminal, a maintenance program for the runways, when is the next time we need to seal coat, when do we need to rebuild? They're looking at all of these issues. How many cracks do we have, are these cracks that we need to be concerned with? I have printed off a list for the advisory board of all the projects that the city has participated in since basically the 70s. The runway side of it, it's been, it's been 10, 15, 20 years for some of them, for the maintenance. So of course it becomes a safety issue, and we want to get a plan in place. They've also worked on updating the FAA master record. For those of you who don't know what that is, is pilots can look at the master record, and it shows what the airport has to offer. Self-serve fuel, what are the prices, full-service fuel, what are the prices, what are our hours of operation, do we have someone there who can assist, do we have mechanics, do we provide other services? It's basically kind of like the, "Do I want to come here for, you know, the scenery, or do I need to fill up?", it's our little story. The last inspection, we did get hit with a couple items dealing with rush towards one of the ends of the runways. In order to get that removed off our master record, we have to have another inspection. So it's one of those, waiting for Tex-That to come back out and say, "Okay, this is what's going on." The master record is also important when it comes to funding, because it sees how many airplanes are based here in Alpine. So we've had a lot of change over at the airport with the cell and construction of new hangars, so that means we've had a lot of changes in planes coming and going. That number is important to show that we're an active, lively airport. Isabel Blair's actually been wonderful in helping with get that, me in the right direction, Johnny in the right direction, who to contact, to make sure we get those numbers up to date. You'd be surprised, we have a lot more airplanes. I think they hide all in one hangar, but there are a lot of them out there, they're a little over 50. The last thing, they have an actual airport advisory board meeting tomorrow, so most of what they're gonna go over is kind of the day-to-day operations, the things that they've noticed, things that they've seen, who's responsible for what. One of the items that they took away from the last meeting was the discuss of the flow fees, so that is on the agenda for the master fee plan, for them to address the flow fee. They had already brought up the discussion with the fuel prices in general. Their four main sources of revenue are fuel, oil, the land lease itself, and then, maybe it's three. Those are their three main ones. Sometimes a fourth one. So those are where everything comes from. So their operating budget is basically based off of those things. So if they're not collecting them, it does hurt them in the long run, being able to operate and maintain the airport, especially via FAA guidelines. So if you want to volunteer this summer and mow, we would be grateful to have you out there. We are required by FAA to have the airport mowed to a specific height, completely, the fence line has to be cleared. Our two operators do a wonderful job, but sometimes they just prefer not to mow for eight hours straight, so. But they're, they're doing great. It's been a big change since I've started, a lot of improvements, a lot of questions, asking for information that no one else had asked for before, so.
Two questions. What time's the voluntary board meeting?
It is tomorrow at 5:30 here in the chambers.
Okay.
And if you're lucky, you can go to the 811 digging meeting next door at 6:00, and they're serving dinner.
And second question, is there a liability with volunteers cutting mall in the rest?
There is, and we do have waivers. Typically, we do ask other departments here within the city to help. Our Parks Department for several years have actually gone out there and helped. Tex-That has a ramp program, which we are part of, it's a 50/50, so we get reimbursed 50% of what we spend, but they've started to tighten down what is eligible. So things like if it has wheels, they won't pay for it, so we can't get a new tractor. They are looking at possibly reimbursing us for contract services, especially... They are looking at possibly reimbursing us for contract services, especially if that contract is with the state. So I know that the Texas Department of Highways uses that mowing group. The guys are actually located here in Alpine. It's reaching out to them and just saying, you know, what would they quote us to do at one time? Usually the start of the season is the hardest, you want to get it all mowed at once, so then, you know, as weather comes around and goes, you can kind of maintain it a little bit easier. Usually they start mowing on one side, by the time they're done with this side, they're back on this side. The runways, the taxiways are the most important. Those are the areas that we are required by FAA guidelines to keep with under 12 inches. The open areas is a little bit different. We still have to maintain them. We also have to be cautious with areas that waterstorm water gathers. That is a big no-no, you don't want wildlife coming in. The fence line, of course, that is a goldmine for the city of Alpine. People don't realize the number of animals who try to come in. Johnny and them aren't here, but they have chased off hogs, they chased off deer. They cause damage to a plane, especially when it's coming in trying to land and it hits a deer. So that fence is important. If we try to maintain it, sometimes that brush will pick it up and everything gets through. So they do really good at trying to at least keep that clear so that nothing can come through. But we are one of the very, I want to say the few, but luckiest in this area to have it completely fenced in. Any other questions?
Great report, thank you. Thank you very much.
And go out to the airport, it's very peaceful, you can sit out there, take a nap.
Okay, visitor center, Ellen Melvin.
We've been very busy at the visitor center. In October, our numbers are a little lower than they were last year, by 75. But I also attended the state fair at the booth in conjunction with the Brewster County Tourism Board. And while I was there, I met probably more people than live in the tri-county area in one building. So it was amazing. So some of our numbers are down, they were down from in November also, and they were down in December. In December, we were closed several days for the holidays, and then I had a death in my family, my brother passed away, so I was gone. And so we were kind of short in October, November, and December, but our yearly total is up 1,039 from last year. So we had new packets to send out for the events and stuff, we sent out 150 of those the last quarter. And so far this month, with spring break going on, we've already had 800 people come through to visitor center just since the first of March. And over half of those were last week to this week, so it's been a pretty good season so far.
Steve, you're doing a great job over there. Been there a couple of times and quite few visitors, so then you've been very helpful with the course and showing the places to visit and whatnot, so great job.
So Ellen, this is reflected December, what about the January, February, how long should you take your PTO about? Because we're in March now.
Right, but this is the quarter that I'm doing, the December, the last quarter of last year.
Is there any way to give us more recent data when we come back next time?
Yes, sir.
That'd be very helpful, I think. Yeah, because having the data is helpful with working on a career, which I appreciate, that's what I have to do. Give us some more.
Okay, I'll read both of them next time.
Thank you very much.
One last question. First of all, a comment that you guys are doing a great job out there, I've heard some good comments from residents. But I'm curious on this quota report for October, we had a number of 506 visitors from the state of Texas, and 341 from state Texas in November, and then December, 211. Any idea where, where these folks are coming from in Texas? Are they the mostly city folks?
Yes, a lot of them, Houston and the Dallas area. We get a lot from Houston. And then the Dallas-Fort Worth area. But they come here because they've never been here before, that was the thing, that's the thing that we get all the time. We've lived in Texas all of our lives, but we never even knew this part was out here. There was a man in there yesterday, and he said that, he was talking about how he never knew that this was out here, and he said, man, people are going to discover it, and they're going to move out here, and they're going to change it into Houston or Dallas or something like that, and I said, I don't think so. It's too far to anything. We kind of like it that way.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, we'll start with tourism. Chris.
Hello there. So the first thing on my report is in answer to a request that I had from Councilman Stevens, I've got some pictures, but I got to figure out where that HDMI is going. I'll do that in a second. So you had asked for occupancy benchmarks, so that we had an idea of overall for the city, what we were looking at, and so I requested that from the Texas Hotel Lodging Association, reflects data. So the first portion of my report is that, now that, this data is partial, it doesn't cover our guest lodging, our Airbnbs and things like that at all. It also does not have every single hotel in there, and I had a call in to them today to try and figure out where exactly is this all coming from? Because you'll notice a jump in the rooms between 2017 and 2018, and that's Wildity Inn was not on the books at all for 2015, 2016, 2017, which is confusing me, it wasn't even under the previous name. So that's a good portion of that jump from 488 to 539.
I think at our last meeting at the visitor center of the hotels that were there, I think there was only five, right?
Yeah, that's the star reporting, which this is much more comprehensive than that. Yeah, it's got, so that's, they were very helpful and sent me this information, but I'm not quite sure where it came from, so I still need to dig with them. But what we're looking at is an average of between 55 and 60% for the last three years, for the last 2016 and 2017. We don't have all, this is everything they could give me on that request. So we were at 60.1% average for 2016, 59.8 for 2017, and that reflects with that addition of all those rooms. So that is a pretty considerable jump in actual room nights to maintain that close of a percentage. Yes.
So V-CAD, we track this data as well from an evaluation of hotels from an asset base. Sounds like you're getting it from the hotel side. Would it be worthwhile to get you the data? Because that comes in a report, and that's the basis for how we collect access to our hotels.
I don't see why no.
Okay, I'll go ask Denise to get ahold of you then and pass that information.
And yeah, and then we'll dig through it and then try and find out what's most relevant so that we can get something consistent going forward.
Because we know all the hotels in the city, because from a tax-based collection standpoint, we know exactly where they're at, and we know the revenue base.
Yes.
That's not something we're going to make public, but in terms of information available, that may be helpful on the occupancy basis.
Precisely. Yeah, one thing that I noted, that year over year, we were having a considerable jump in revenue, even when the occupancy percentage was staying pretty steady. I gave you a comparison point for each of those, of the US average, which I think is only kind of helpful, because that includes everything, it includes the, you know, the most visited places in the country. I will try to find some other more similar comparison point, some other communities of our size, and see if, how we're tracking that, because I don't know yet.
Okay, good, thank you. But it also says we get revenue, at least a year ago, or 2017, 10 and a half million dollars in revenue from hotels.
Exactly, yes. And yeah, there seems to be pretty steady growth, even showing into the third quarter is all we had in 2018, and that also showed an increase over the previous third quarter of 2017. You'll see a list of all the print ads that we have done and the digital ads, I'll kind of leave that for the moment and hit a few highlights. We had a hotel summit meeting on February 7th and invited, we had an excellent turnout. We also invited the event organizers to attend so that we could try and put faces to names so that they, as the events are needing to quantify the room nights that they're generating when they give their reports after their events, we are trying to help them coordinate with the hotels to get that occupancy data. And it was a really positive, positive meeting, seemed to, it seemed to set a good tone, I think we can build on it going forward. We also, if I could find this HDMI cable.
Yeah, it's that one.
There we go, that's it. Does? There it is. Okay, now.
Is it focused?
Let me, I lost my center here, let me back into. There we go. We launched our mobile app this last quarter, that took us a while, it's on a slideshow here, let's go back. This is the web view of the same interface, but this map, it's got a feed of our Facebook photos and things that I post, it's also got our feed of our events calendar, and then we have on the right-hand side, categories of places in town that you can locate on the map. So these things are available on iOS and Android under Visit Alpine, Texas. We've begun getting weekly reports from the app vendor, and we're getting fairly consistent downloads. It's small to start with, we're not putting a whole lot of money into promoting it, so, but I've heard anecdotally that it's being used from some merchants, they've seen people coming into their stores using the app. So it's a nice feature, and so I'm really pleased that you're able to get that launched.
So Chris, if people want to get information on the app, who do they contact?
They can contact me, they can also go to visitalpine tx.com. The first slide on the homepage takes you to a page with more information about it.
Oh, but if they want to get information on it, that's all on the main page?
Yeah, the main website, that's where I would start, is the Visit Alpine TX.
Because I'm getting people like it, they want to get information on it, so they can use the advertising.
Oh, yeah, then they contact me. Yeah, if there's a business.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, and not just business owners, but if any residents can think of something that is going to be of interest to visitors that's not on there, yeah, get in touch with me. The admin web address is at the bottom of that website, where it's chris@visitalpintx.com. Working pretty hard to keep it up to date, but of course, it's not 100% comprehensive and never will be. This is an ad we ran in Southwest Magazine, we got a really good price on it, this is a third-page ad with our new photograph that Dan Klepper took for us. This one gets about, they estimate, 5 million readers per issue because it's in the, so many people see every copy in the plane. This is ordinarily a $21,000 ad, and we get it for seven because of a friend of a friend of a friend. This is the January issue of Texas Highways. We participate in a now six-partner co-op ad, so we get a full page in Texas Highways every other month. What we did this year is each partner gets a chance to have that top half of the page to highlight them, and Alpine's was in January promoting cowboy poetry. We also, this was a brand-new thing, there was an opportunity that arose, the Houston Astro, it's Houston Astros, their program, their yearbook, they approached us about doing an ad there, and I immediately said, no, that's way too expensive, we can't do that, it was $10,000 for half a page. And I told them that, well, maybe if we partnered with the Alpine Cowboys, it might make some sense, but I don't, you know, I don't see that happening, that's half of their ad budget. And they dropped it from 10,000 to 4,000. And so when we split that, we were able to do it, and this also gets to several million viewers through the course of the entire baseball season, and so we were promoting our beautiful ballpark and our home team, so hopefully that will get us on some of that radar for that experience that we can offer so well. One other thing that was kind of neat opportunity that I just stumbled onto, this is an Instagram feed called I Love Texas Photo that just has guest photographers. And I asked them if they would be interested in us using our contest photos, instead of, it's not one photographer, it's a bunch of different people showing photos of Alpine, and they went for it. And so I posted about 16 of our contest photos over three days, and they have about 75,000 followers, so that was a nice opportunity at no cost. And this is an article in The Independent, which is a major newspaper in the United Kingdom. We hosted a group of journalists from the UK that, they were brought to us by the state, the Texas State Travel Office, their UK representative brought a group. And so just about a week ago, this article hit, I think that was back in, oh gosh, I don't remember, my life is a blur, it might have been.
It was in December.
Was it in December?
It came in December.
Thank you. And we also, this was a little while ago, we had an article and a video on MTV UK, because that was one of the, one of those other journalists, so that was two, this is just a piece of, there's a lot of Instagram photos, and these articles both covered Alpine and Marfa and And then one other kind of surprise, there was an article that, it was actually a shoe catalog that did this article, but they rated the best winter hiking destinations around the US, and they put Alpine as number two. And so that was a nice little thing we could share, it got a little bit of traction online. And that's all my pictures, but there's just a couple more highlights I wanted to mention. I'm working with Jessica on the very initial steps of trying to get Alpine certified as a Texas music-friendly community through the Governor's Texas Music Office. I think we're actually pretty well, there's certain requirements we have to hit, but I think they're all very doable, and I'll be reporting on that more as we go forward. There's also, recently had a meeting with Chris Weber from TechSop, with Jessica, about wayfinding signs around town. We did a comprehensive, more or less, report of the directional signs that TechSop has in place in and approaching Alpine. And so we identified the locations that would be most useful to visitors and made a request to them to add signs directing people to parks, the airport, city hall, the county courthouse, various places in town. Only some of that's going to happen because of the TechSop rules, but Chris was very amenable to doing the things that he could do without any doubt. And then what's left on that list, we'll be looking at using the wayfinding line item in the hotel occupancy tax budget to fill those things in. Another piece that we're looking at is working with the Alpine Downtown Association to do, to brand downtown Alpine with some roadside banners as you're approaching the core downtown area, so that's something that.
An arch.
And, oh right, well, yeah. And trying to get a giant archway over the highway added to the US 67 corridor plan, yeah. That's definitely going to happen. And the last thing I want to mention is a brand-new event that is pretty exciting, that several folks on Murphy Street and are working on. It began as a birthday party for Betty Gaddis Endo, but it is expanding into Alpine history celebration in general. So they're calling it Fiesta 1888, after the year that Alpine received the name Alpine, and it's a celebration of Alpine history. The first of an annual series will be celebrating Murphy Street, and the idea is that they're going to have historic presentations and displays of as many of the buildings on and near Murphy Street as they can of the historic uses and owners, et cetera, of all the buildings there. They're going to be collecting oral histories, they're going to have a videographer there, and so they'll be able to share and collect oral histories. The Archives of the Big Bend is working with them, Center for Big Bend Studies is working with them. And so it'll be a nice way to both acknowledge, but also collect from the community their memories and history and build on, on the stories that we have. So yeah, it's a, it's a really nice effort, I think. Those are all my highlights. If you have any questions, I'll be happy.
That question going back to the beginning from the hotel, motel recording. We still don't have an accurate count on the Airbnbs.
But we do kind of. We do kind of. There's a, there's a website called AirDNA that we looked at that actually, we have 93 functioning short-term rentals online in Alpine. And so it gives us, gives us an information source. At the moment, I'm sort of socially reaching out to people here and there and letting them know, because a lot of people who are on Airbnb, they see occupancy taxes being collected automatically through the platform. And that's the state piece, but they don't realize that the city has its own piece. So we're in a, the infant stages of, you know, informational efforts to let them know.
Because when I talked to the folks up at the Capitol back in February, they said that those names would not, cannot be divulged. And I says, wait a minute, they advertised it, so why is it a secret? And says, well, Airbnb just pays us a lump sum, so we don't know the individuals who, they don't provide an individual.
Yeah, the state, the state negotiated very well with the state's interest in that respect. You know, they, they got their piece, but Airbnb, you know, got their anonymity along with it. So it didn't really help anybody but the state.
No, but the state, that's all they have. That's what, I was trying to make my point with them, this gate, I'm up to them guy down there.
Yeah.
But it gives the same issue on many state items. When it comes to property sales, which the state bases, how they assess whether or not we're in compliance with the collecting of our property backs, they keep that data, they will not pass it along to any tax entities. So then they come back and run the licenses to you, I collect the money, the taxes, so this is a common issue the state just isn't listening to.
I'm trying to make my point, apparently, but I don't know where.
I don't think it goes on that person.
Yeah. Yes. Thank you, Chris.
Yes.
Well, thank you for sharing the highlights with us, but in the information package you provided, I have to say, like, this is a very complete update.
I hope it's not too complete.
Many things are happening now. And congratulations for that. But the important thing that's all that is happening is you're helping to make, and I love not you, but along with the manner of the staff, is making Alpine a destination, not just across road to somewhere else. You can come here, you can enjoy the beauty we have, the culture, the history, the music, et cetera. And Alpine has it and we're, we're getting the word out. I'm doing my own thing as well.
Yes.
I follow the Facebook page for the city of Alpine and I get, I get almost daily the updates of events and things to come. And of course I head chair and it goes out there and it's interesting enough of getting feedback from friends in Mexico City, Chihuahua. And all they're saying is, God, Alpine sounds interesting, come visit.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Good.
I just wanted to point out that from the Airbnb collection, we've had six new people in the past two months submit taxes. Of course, we don't know what Airbnb they're using, if they're using a particular name, like if it's, you know, the Sunshine House or the Purple Door. So, but they are starting to pay. And the SBDC actually reached out to me because they've had a lot of people, apparently all the conversations you guys have had have sparked interest with them and they go to the SBDC for guidance. And they actually are using our packets now basically with all the information. By the way, you still are responsible for your city taxes. So I thought that was encouraging that they, they reached out to us to get the information to make sure people who are coming to them to start small businesses have all the documentation. So the more you talk about it, it seems to get out there and, and people are starting to pay.
It helps them also.
Yeah, the one thing we can offer is, is promotion through the city's website. And, and that is something that's a real challenge, somebody who comes and starts paying the tax, if they don't actually tell us which one it is, then I see a report and I see like, you know, BDFD LLC and, you know, I, I don't know which one it is. I, so, but eventually we'll get it worked out. But that is the carrot that we have to offer is that, is that promotion.
Okay, good deal.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, let's go to item D. Congressman Stevens.
Sir, so there's a number of items here. We'll start with this one. Just trying to have a discussion. I've gotten lots of questions in input about average billing that went away. I know there's a thought that there is a position by the AG, but average billing is used by many, many utilities around the state. So that'll be what I'll talk about because I've gotten lots of complaints from citizens in my ward who've said, I mean, my bills went from an average bill of $60 a year for gas, now I'm paying $300 for gas. I'm struggling to make ends meet, so we're glad to have that discussion.
So the budget billing for the gas hasn't changed. The one that, that we did kind of put a stop to was, or kind of suspend, was on the water. The gas budget billing comes out of the market, I think you just can't untouch it. So I can't really answer to that one. I know of one specific resident that I talked to that had an issue where their, but their bill was higher in January and February and the gas department made several visits to the House to address the issue. But the rush now behind the billing on the water side really was based on a conversation that was held during the summer with some issues we were having with budget billing, with kind of the, just different things that were happening with it. And so we had a conversation, Melissa, Megan and I, about it. And so in October, I reached out to Mick because we couldn't find, I guess we couldn't find any guidance ordinance-wise as to how to correct the situation. And there, there wasn't one. And so then I sent an email to Mick on October 2nd. And the thought process at the time was that we probably have an ordinance by the end of December that we could then implement and then just kind of get it started. And worst-case scenario, then we'd be able to put it kind of back in place in the spring with the same, in the same cycle as the gas department. But we don't, we don't have that. That ordinance has not come in. So again, the request went to the lawyer on budget billing. His response was it was permissible for electric and gas. There was not so much certainty about water. And then there were some questions that kind of went back and forth as to whether our software could do some of the things that met the requirements. And I think as of last week, and you've got a draft coming up here pretty soon on it.
Right.
And that way they're all in place. So, and, and it's really kind of going back to, yeah, we do budget billing, but what happens at the end of the cycle, when they use more water than what they initially budgeted for and then it goes to an amount on a water side where it goes from, maybe they're paying $120 a month, but they've been using more and then it jumps up to 180 or 200 and they've got to cover that balance in there. And then some issues with some leaks as far as, you know, well, we, we don't have a really sound leak adjustment policy either in addressing that. And we know there's issues with metering, we know there's issues with the accuracy of old meters. And we had a consultant that came in while Chris was still here in November, gave us an estimate of what, of the revenue that we were losing through, or based on the age of our meters. But for me, it, it also goes back to if we don't have an ordinance in place that gives us guidance and nothing that really says at the discretion of the city manager, I, I really can't help them. And so that was kind of, the hope was that we have, we have the ordinance by December to put back in place in January. Worst-case, we do it in March and we're just not there yet.
So, some feedback. I've been told we get away with balanced billing for gas as well.
Well, my understanding, that one doesn't, didn't come up until March. So at the time, the only one that was being discussed was, was water.
So I'll bring you various specific cases where people have average billing for gas and told it went away last summer and they ended up with skyrocketing bills here during the winter time. So I'll, I'll bring those to you. Relative to water, and a little bit of the concern, you know, from a council standpoint, we get lots of questions and we don't know what's going on because you're running a day-to-day. It's kind of tough to go work it. I was told letters went out in the summertime relative to water. If we need to work, our responsibility, now done philosophically, or just put together and says, we authorize balanced billing for water. It's not a big deal. But now we are eight to nine months into the process and we still aren't ordinance. So lots and lots of complaints on that. And, and I can tell you, I'll bring you a very specific case. An individual wrote out all of the details for me on the water bill she had, including issues of metering. She paid it, it was a non-issue. She says, I have complete capacity to pay it, but I got surprised in a lot of cases. And these just aren't the sorts of things when we do citywide. I just think council needs to be part of that loop. Part of that process.
Well, and I, I believe I did talk about it at one of my updates, and I don't remember if it was the November or the December one, about the issue with the budget billing. I don't know how the letters went out in the summer because the email actually said that the letters would go out at the end of October.
Okay.
And, and that, that cycle ended in January.
Okay, I'll go pull the facts and data and we'll sit down and we'll work on it. Okay? But, but what you're saying is we still have balanced billing for gas.
But that was my understanding because at the time, we were just talking about budget billing for water. The water was where we were having the issue.
I will go get you very specific cases of what balanced billing for gas went away at the direction of the city. Okay? So that's an issue. Because we're getting two different stories here. And I'll go, go work on the water.
And, and the gas department, there, there is an ordinance for budget billing for gas. I mean, it, it's not as thorough as it could be, I think. I think it was something that was just adopted at the time that the gas department was.
Or the city.
But there was not one done for water.
Okay. Okay, I'll go, go pull the facts and we'll sit down and we'll bring that back. My view on, I don't know the rest of the council's view, average billing in my view is an important element for residents to be able to have and we need to get that back in place because I'm told it's been ruined.
Yeah, and, and it's come up at my monthly meetings and I know we did the one in, in December and that question came up and I did tell them, we're looking at, at having it back in place by the spring. So it's just a temporary thing and when it came up again in January, kind of was the same response. We're, we're hoping to have that here up in the spring and back in place. And then the thought was they'll run on the same cycle as the gas does in March.
So here we are in March, we're at the last meeting of March. Nick, you say you have a draft ordinance?
We'll have it here by the next meeting.
So for April 2nd, we'll get that on the table.
Yeah, the water is a little more complex from the ordinance standpoint. There have, there are some problems with that. True, true ups for water.
Right.
There's a potential for that for gas, but typically the water is the most problematic. So we're, we're working on that. Sorry it's late.
Okay, I'll go bring the specific cases back and walk you through them.
Well, and I think at the last meeting, we talked about something about being able to authorize some discounts and waivers as well as adjustments. What does council want to see each of those or do they want to allow the city manager to have that discretion to resolve those issues? And, and the purpose of that question at that meeting also was to build that into that ordinance so they know how to work that part of it. And I think the decision by council at the time was to authorize a discretion and then maybe discuss a maximum amount.
That's correct. Okay, so we got some work to do on that one. Okay. So I, I know we're going to talk about roads coming up as an action item. One of my worries though is we allocated last year about a million dollars on roads, didn't come, and we were close to spending that. We allocated a million dollars for roads this year. It's not clear that we have ordered material yet and my worry is paving season has now started and we have none for it. So what's our plan?
Well, at this point, if it's okay with council, can we move this discussion when we get to item number 10 and the action item? That way we have the whole street discussion all at the same time?
Okay, so long as we have that discussion as well, yeah. My worry is, you know, we're going to be out of like given material except we're going to pay a premium for material.
So can we have that discussion with number 10?
Yes.
I'll bring it back up. Okay, the next item, concerned about where we are on the organization. We have staff, if I counted the boxes, roughly 80. We're 20% short, so it's a challenge getting all the work done. I just was trying to get an update. Where do you see us going with that? And do you see the organization chart changes and what's your plan for that?
Yes. So we do, we are looking at the potential of an organizational chart change in the, here in the near future. Not real set where that's going to be, just to give you an update, because I just got the final done the graphics from HR today, is that if you recall this time last year, we were reporting 43% turnover in employees. This year, from October through January, we're at 18%. And then we tracked a little bit less from January through the end of September. So it was still a little high through the end of the fiscal year, but right now we're at 18%. The average annual base pay when we did this a year ago was $20,552. And we're projected that the average annual base pay, this is all employees, will be substantially higher this year at $34,000. So median household income for Alpine is 37, so we're still not hitting median household income. And median household income for the Cammies at 38, so there's still some work to do in there. And then of course, once we get all the positions filled, those numbers will adjust a little on their own. We had 105 authorized positions with this budget.
105?
105. 105 is 88 full-time, seven part-time, and then 10 seasonal. So we had 105. At this point, right now, we are actively looking for nine people. There are 18 and a half positions that we're not aggressively seeking to fill. For example, the two positions in the fire department, while we have advertised it and we have had some response back on the fire chief, we're still waiting, wanting to get all of the equipment turned over to us and inventory done, because there was some kind of prerequisites that we wanted to see happen before we went out and expensed a fire chief and an administrative assistant. There was a position for, well, for example, my administrative, my executive administrative assistant resigned at the end of January. I'm not looking really right now to actively replace her because there's just too much on the table right now. And then we're getting ready to start setting a budget calendar and starting to do that. So that's three positions. I think there's, the position in Hyda is still vacant, but we're not able to fill that one yet. There's two positions in Animal Control also that they have, one of them they're not going to be filling and the other one, it, the, well, Jennifer from Animal Control has not given us kind of the go-ahead to start looking for that replacement. So again, we're actively still looking for nine people. Public, Public Works Director, Public Utilities Director will be interviewing one person next week along with communications people, street workers and police officers. So really that's kind of where we're at. The street department, just for the sake of conversation here, the street department has one position vacant.